We're going to call this meeting in order. David has stepped down, so I'm going to go out the rest of his term. Next year, because people are going to nominate me again. Look at her. Okay. First item on the agenda, called order. Second item, approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Approval of the July 10, 2018 minutes is under number three. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion?
No.
Administrator before.
All right. Well, members, I'd like to recognize a few of our outstanding employees this year for some accomplishments they've had. First, I'd like to start with Ms. Julie Corley. Julie, would you come up? Dr. Huntsburg, would you join?
Sure.
Right. Ms. Corley was recently named Alabama's School Nurse of the Year. This is a fantastic accomplishment. She's, of course, a nurse at Calhoun Heights Elementary School and her principal. Dr. Huntsburg nominated her for the award.
Yes.
Yes, and so I wanted to ask if you would say a few words.
Julie just does a fabulous job. When I came over to Calhoun Heights two years ago, I was so impressed with her initiative and all that she was doing in our school. So she helps with so many extra things aside from just supporting the kids with their needs. But she has programs for staff, for health and wellness. She's led exercise classes. She leads our Girls on the Run Club for our students. And she's taken on Body Trek this year that we're having come over from Children's Hospital for three weeks this fall. So I just can't say enough wonderful things about her initiative and how she takes on things at the school. So we appreciate you very much, and you're very well-deserving of this honor.
Been a nurse女士 for 11 years. Prior to that, was in pediatric and neonatal.
Right.
So certainly seen a lot of things that add value to her being with us. So congratulations, Julie.
Thank you.
Any words you want to give?
No. No, thank you, no.
Dr. Huntsburg, while you were up here, I'm referring to her as doctor because she's recently completed her EDD requirements for doctorate at Sanford University. And so congratulations, Alicia. Congratulations. Graduation?
Not until December.
December graduation.
They don't have an August graduation. So.
She wants to get a full report on her dissertation.
I'm ready.
I've set aside seven seconds for that.
This principal affected me.
All right. I think anyone in this room and in the community would recognize Coach Buddy Anderson's name. And he's synonymous with the Vestavia Hills City Schools, has been with the system 46 years and is beginning his 41st year as a head coach in the Vestavia Hills High School. And he shared with me how all that came to be when I first got here. It's quite a story unto its own self. But this summer, he was recognized by the National Federation of State High School Associations as a member of the National High School Hall of Fame. He was a part of a class that included the Fosbury Flop Guide and was it the Sparstar?
Tom Osborne.
Tom Osborne, Nebraska, Nebraska coach. So a very prestigious group. But Coach Anderson has already been named to the Hall of Fame in Vestavia Hills and Thomasville and Alabama. So this was just another one in the collection of Hall of Fames he's been recognized for. He has collected 329 wins in 40 years as head coach. Inside those wins includes 30 playoff appearances and two state championships. And I happen to be board members on the other side of the field in the 1998 year when I had a team on the state championship. And I can attest to the fact that they were really good. So congratulations, Coach Anderson. Before we applaud this accomplishment, I asked Rusty Weaver to speak just as a former rebel and one of your former players. And he promised to say only good things today, Coach Anderson. But no, he wanted to speak and offer some words, and I thought that that would be a fitting for this recognition.
Thanks, Dr. Freeman. Mr. Denton said only have 45 minutes, so we could get right into it. I'm here today on behalf of Athletic Director Jeff Seegers to welcome Vestavia Hills High School Head Football Coach Buddy Anderson. As Dr. Freeman mentioned, he's just been elected to the National High School Hall of Fame. He's already in the Alabama High School Sports Hall of Fame and the Vestavia Hills Sports Hall of Fame. Some of the high points of his coaching career, as Dr. Freeman already mentioned, 329 wins, 16 area and region championships, and the 30 playoff appearances with the two state championships. I had the privilege of playing for Coach Anderson and being a member of three of those playoff teams in the late 1980s. And now my son plays for Coach Anderson. As he enters his 41st year of coaching. And I can remember as a player dreaming of someday coming back to Vestavia and raising my family. And my kids being a part of that high school and that program. And now it's happened. The ironic thing about these accolades that Coach Anderson receives is that the wins and the championships are not his greatest achievement as a coach. His greatest achievement as a football coach is helping young boys become men. And he teaches them to be men of great faith. He teaches them how to be great fathers and great husbands. He teaches them how to be community leaders. And perhaps most importantly, he teaches them how to live a life with character and a humble spirit. And today, that's what we're truly thankful for, Coach. Thank you.
Coach, congratulations. Comments you'd like to make?
No, I've just been very blessed to work in the greatest community in, I feel like, in Alabama. And we're with a lot of great people, a lot of great administrators, a lot of great teachers, a lot of great coaches that I've had opportunity to work with, and most of all, the great kids I've had to work with. And I just, it's just very, very humbling. Received a nice letter from one of my former players this week while I was out of town. I just got it and read it. And the thing he talked about was, he said, "Coach," a lot of things that I remember. One thing I remember was, laid down, we were doing some kind of drill, and I was lying down thinking, "What am I doing out here in this four-hour practice? And it's 100 degrees, and what am I doing?" And he came up and said, "If you quit now, you'll quit later. You'll quit in classroom, you'll quit on your family, you'll quit on your children, you'll quit your job. Learn to stick through something tough, it's going to be tough. Life is going to be tough." He said, "Coach," I've never forgotten. And he said, "Yeah." And I don't remember him saying that, but you know. A lot of things I remember saying. But also, you know, just the opportunity to working with young people is a blessing. And just keeping prayers. We have a young man now that was in an accident a week ago Sunday. He was with a bunch of friends on a farm on a dirt road, and I don't know the whole circumstance. That's neither here nor there. But he was thrown out of the car. He didn't have his seatbelt on. And he was fighting for his life. Now, he's got severe head injuries, and we just don't know how that's going to go. But I have faith that, you know, God's going to work on him in his life, that he will be, that he will be okay. But remember Charlie Stoles and his mother, his Cathy Fisher, one of our math teachers? And that's the thing she told us as a coach. As I went to see him yesterday, she said, "Vestavia is a family." And she said, "I've had so much support from this community and other teachers and coaches and people that I work with and this whole community. And that's what Vestavia is a family." And so, but keep him in his prayers, and Charlie Stoles, and I just pray that he will leave, that everything will be okay. Coach Merrill went to see him today, and he was actually got to eat some more popsicle, which doesn't seem like much, but it's a big step right now. Thank you again, Rusty. Thank you. And I just thank the opportunity to be here and to work in this community.
Congratulations.
Order.
All right. We'll move to Jane Marie Marlin. She's going to update you on strategic plan. You've got that sheet right in front of you.
Yeah, I put those in front of you. Good afternoon. I'd like to draw your attention to the second page as we do some updates. But just because it's been so, such a long time, maybe since we talked about the origin of the logo with the infinity symbol. But I just want to remind everyone that that was something that was designed by one of our teachers who was on our first strategic plan team. And each of those symbols speaks to one of the areas of our focus. And if you look down on that second page, you'll see the infinity loop. And I think it's going to click over to the document that's online on our website. But as he's doing that, if you'll see, there are the symbols that are there and how those speak to the notion of learning without limits. And this is something that we have really been focusing on over the last several years as the area that we are making all decisions. Is we want to make decisions that are based on our strategic plan. And capturing some of those into a document that you see in front of you is something that was long overdue. So we started putting these in a documentation that looks like this for you guys to see. We put it on the website last year, and it is under the website, under the Strategic Plan tab. And you'll be able to go and see that live, and any one in the community can do that. So the copy that you have in front of you is sort of the, we're on face two. We're all the way to the end of our first round of this strategic plan. And I want to highlight a few things that we've done that we're really proud of and the work that we've done on behalf of the kids and the teachers and the families in this community, and then some things that we have on the horizon. At our summer retreat, and that is a little bit of a misnomer. It's not, it's the time we spent a lot of time on the planning ahead for the next future of the next school year. We were able to break off into teams and talk about what do all the aspects of our strategic plan really mean? And then how do they call us to act? What in that particular idea around the strategy are we doing to be sure that we're keeping this thing in motion? And so I'll draw your attention really to the end of the last. It won't load. Okay. Well, you have it in front of you. On the last column, the face three actions, I want to draw your attention to a few things. One would be that if you look at the last, you can see that the ninth grade academy that will open in 2019 speaks to the idea of the multiple opportunities. Because we know that there are things that we're going to be able to do in that ninth grade academy or that ninth grade campus on behalf of kids as they pursue college and careers, and they begin to look at that, that we know that we're going to be able to meet their needs in a specific way when we have those kids on that campus. So that's one that's sort of a future one. But I want us to look at just some of the things that we've already done as they relate to our AMSTAD Science Curriculum. We are in our continuing that. We're into our second year of rotation with that. Expanding really career and opportunities for exploration. Last year at East, we had a really interesting opportunity. They had a brand-new way for kids to investigate careers through their kind of careers on wheels. And that's something that we have highlighted in our annual report that we're working on. Expanding and making sure that our dual enrollment opportunities are in place, especially as they relate to some of our children who are in advancement courses as younger children. Being sure that we have those pathways built for them as they enter into the middle and high school. One thing that we're especially excited about is that we're going to add an alumni spotlight to highlight some postgraduate programs and work of our students. Because a lot of times, our students aren't thinking about what does it look like in a job setting. They're thinking just of college. So we feel like that's something that we can work on to really expand that. And then you heard about this last year, we offered the college bus tours where we actually took children to different campuses to be able to see and investigate that as a group with some of our council staff. I'll look at the second strategy, expose students to a array of opportunities to discover their unit gifts. One way that we're continuing to expand, we opened it last year, and that was the Lancer Pirate Opportunities that we had at the two middle schools. And really expanding the use of student leadership across the school district. If you think about the high school, the Vestavia Hills Leadership School and class that we offered at the high school, we had an opportunity last spring to just go in and see their projects. And one of the outpourings of that course was the app that was recognized by Blackboard this summer at their national conference. So when we think about, you know, when we talk about the actions that are forthcoming or we just finished, these things were things that were planned several years ago. So just to look at the end column on this really doesn't speak to the work that was done previously that all this is predicated on. The next strategy, building staff capacity to emphasize individual responsibility. We just graduated in May of 2018, our first teacher leader cohort that we started in fall of 2016. That really speaks to giving teachers an opportunity to, it started really with our Design It Yourself learning and giving teachers an opportunity to really have a voice, not just bringing them in for a focus group, but really having a voice. And one of the updates in our strategic plan in the next section was actually born in the Teacher Leader Project. So while it may show up in one area of our strategic plan, good strategic planning really crosses over and answers to multiple strategies. So as you look at this, you can't just always draw a straight and perfect line across. So when we get to that, I will reference that, but that is one way that we emphasize individual responsibilities. And then just how we continue to use our evaluation process, which is probably the most, it's highly sophisticated in many levels to it, but it actually is probably the most useful evaluation system that I've ever been a part of. Because teachers are really given opportunities to spotlight the work that they're doing, to make some choices about some of the ways in which that they put evidence in for their administrators to evaluate. So that is an area that we are continuing to utilize as a way for us to grow our employees. The next strategy, the dynamic of learning and teaching that prevents questioning and honors academic risk-taking. We feel like one of the ways that we can promote that is through a more specialized mentor and coaching cycle that we can fit through some of our teachers. And that actually was born of a Teacher Leader Project where Jennifer and Brooke have been working this summer to train those individuals who are going to be doing some different kinds of levelized and specialized mentoring and coaching. We rarely hire lots of brand-new teachers right out of the university setting. So many of our teachers are coming to us with years of experience. Maybe they've worked in another district, or maybe they've been in another occupation, they're second-career teachers, and we're so excited to have those individuals. But their kind of mentoring and coaching looks different. And we've come to realize that that's a way in which that we can really up the game of our instruction by doing a little different mentoring and coaching to them. And just like I mentioned, the evaluation process, the ELLIOT, which is part of our evaluation system and also part of the accreditation process, we did some training on that and really trying to utilize that as a way to integrate technology through instruction and improving that. If you'll go to the next page, inclusivity and respect, creating a culture of that. I want to highlight a couple of things. One that we worked on last year and that we're putting into practice this year is our CI3T, which is a tiered approach to behavior. We're super excited about really getting that off the ground. We spent a whole year in training with a partnership with UAB and preparing for that. That is one way. And then the leader in need that is happening at D-Help next year, and of course, we've had it at Central. We feel like that student leader piece and really helping students to have ownership and grow in their leadership will be a way to do that. And then some of these, if you'll notice, some of these are things that we've already achieved. Like updating our discrimination policy would be an accomplishment that we've already completed in the spring. The next strategy, customize and create global learning environments. One way was to restructure the elementary schools, and that will happen in fall of 2019. And we're going to continue to look at our schedules as we set our ends and start times for school next year and looking at our minutes of instruction. How can we explore ways for more job-oriented teacher learning and collaboration? And then the final strategy, intentionally cultivate reciprocal relationships. One that we know that we are going to continue to work through are ways to be sure that we have our foundation and our leadership Vestavia Hills continuing to participate in our school events. We have a great partnership with both of those groups and really making that a part, a more intentional part of the work that we do so that the connection is more visible to everyone. I mean, one example, I was talking to Tate Stoddard about, is having some of the teachers who receive grants coming in and doing some of their presentations for the foundation members so that they can turn around and take that back out to the community where they really do see the money in action in the classrooms, because sometimes there can be a disconnect. We feel like that's an area that we can shore up, so that's a goal for us. And then utilizing community forums and surveys. We started with that, and every, you know, every spring, we do a survey. The accreditation team will be here January 27th and the 30th. And we've already done our spring surveys in preparation for that. But we always know that that's the best way that we can get information back from our community partners. I just hit the highlights for sake of time, but I wanted you to see some of the things that we are super excited about having in place already and just some of the things that we are working on across the district. Do you have any questions?
Question, please.
What's your mechanism or timeline where you have, how often do you look at, how far you come, what you're doing, what you can add? For the strategic plan? We typically do that once or twice a year, depending on, last year, we did it once just because we were placed in transition of that. But we like, we just finished an update this spring that would have been reflected work that we did last year. But we like to do, typically, we would do an internal update around the middle of the year. We might have an admin meeting and say, "Let's talk about what you're doing and how it connects to that." And when schools write the continuous improvement plan, they are to attach those to the different strategies so that we're all working toward the same ultimate goals.
Okay. Thank you.
We're in the fifth year of this plan, so once accreditation's over, we'll start the process for the next chapter of plan.
And the accreditation team will come in, and they will be using this as an app to see, are we doing what we say we're doing? So right now, we've been practicing and pruning and getting ready for that state debate here in January, gathering our evidence and our data to put in for the state debate here in a couple of months. Any other questions?
Ms. Dressback. AP test results.
If you want to take my notes and pass it down.
SNL style.
SNL. I don't have any jokes built in for this.
Oh, come on.
With, do you have my?
Nope.
So I just want to give you an overview of AP testing. That is maybe of all the hats that I wear at the high school, it might be the most stressful of them come AP testing time. To give you an idea of what we do during that two weeks, we have 424 students taking 1,159 tests over a two-week period. That averages out to 2.73 tests per student. You know, we have some kids that take one, we have some kids that take eight. So it just sort of factors in. 319 of our 424 students scored a three or better on their AP exams. And that is generally what is considered passing. Passing in terms of credit given at the college level for an AP course. That is 75.2% of our students. You can see where we stack up against other Alabama schools. We are not great at math. I always hesitate to mention. 32%, higher than the Alabama average. And we are, you know, generally 14 points higher than the global average on our AP scores. We took 150 more tests this past year than we took the year before. We added 23 more students. The little breakdown in the middle is just to give you sort of a tracking system so you can see over the past three years what we have done. What you'll notice is that our AP students, the number has gone up every year. The number of AP exams has gone up every year. This year, we were a few below the number of AP students with a three-plus, so our percentage took a little bit of a dip there. I think that that is to be expected as last year and the spring before, we made a big push with our AP teachers to begin the idea of opening AP, instead of it being this elite thing that only a few students can achieve, opening the AP classes to more students. There's a lot of research out there that tells us that the more rigor students are exposed to in high school, the better they're going to do in college. And so it doesn't matter if they're not going to ace the test. And we had to get our teachers to agree to let that go a little bit, because they're very proud of their numbers. And they should be very proud of their numbers. But our goal has been to bring more students into the fold of AP and encourage more students to take an AP that have never taken one before. And I did put this stat up there, but this past year, we have more first timers in AP classes than we've had in lots of years. So that's a positive in my book. So I'm not as concerned with that percentage number as some people might see that and say, "Why the dip?" But good reason for the dip. We are more concerned with the numbers down at the bottom. We offer AP, we gave tests in 30 AP courses this past year. We teach 26 of those AP courses on our campus. And then we had students study for, self-study for four different AP tests. One of our newest classes was AP Seminar, and it had a 3.44 average. And this AP Seminar is the first step in a capstone process. There's AP Seminar and AP Research. And that is basically high school students writing a dissertation is essentially what that is. And so that's an incredibly difficult class. So for our students to average a 3.44 on that the very first year out of the gate, we're very proud of that. Some other really notable scores for us, our chemistry, Doc Shire is amazing. She does a wonderful job. Chemistry is often considered to be the hardest of all of the AP tests, and she averages a 3.91. And she averages that with, it's not just like she has a few students taking it. She, she's got two classes full of a period and a half of AP chemistry. So that is excellent. And that included 10 students making a five, which is the highest score that you can make on these tests. Computer science principles averaged a four. English language and composition, I mean, if you didn't already know that Michael Sennett is a rock star, these numbers kind of confirm that. 4.24 average in his classes, including 22 fives. 22 students scoring as high as you can possibly get on an AP exam. He just does an amazing job with the folks that he had. Microeconomics, 11 fives, 28 fours. That blows my mind. I'm not even sure I could get a one unless they give you that for putting your name at the top. Studio art, 4.167. US history, 3.89. That's 19 fives and 21 fours. That's another one that we're really proud of. Ms. Maddox and Ms. Gallagher work really hard with those students. And then world history, I included this one because this is a freshman-only class, and they averaged 3.44. So these are 14 and 15-year-olds that are sitting for a college exam, and they're averaging a passing grade. And that's three classes worth of freshmen that take this course. So great things happening in the AP program at the high school. We certainly appreciate the board's support of that and the support for our students, every one of them being able to take the test and not being paid for. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Dressback. Ask Dr. Burgess to bring to you a report on some more keys being built with student fees and what that looks like for this year. Thank you, Dr. Burgess.
Good afternoon. Thanks for giving me a few moments to talk about our school fees and our process that we took this summer to really audit this process and to look at how we are asking for fees, what we are asking, you know, the reasons behind some of the fees that we have. And honestly, this came out of just a few vocalized concerns as to the cost of attending Vestavia Hills High School. So appropriate time to do this is right at registration when people are paying their school fees. And what I've given you is two documents, last year's fee sheet versus this year's fee sheet. And I figured that would be a good way to just talk about how we went through this. Myself, Ms. Dressback, Jennifer Brown, and our bookkeepers sat down, and we really looked at the courses that are attached to each of these fees. They do all tie back to a line item in our budget. And so we looked at those accounts to determine how healthy they were based on the fees that we've been taking in. And what we determined is that in a lot of these courses, we have very healthy account balances. So it really caused us to look at, we really do have an opportunity to reduce fees and reduce costs to our parents and families that maybe we have not looked at in quite some time. So not having a very good basis of comparison for how we spend these fees during the school year, just because we haven't looked at it in this way in the past, what we decided to do was create a baseline for all courses that tie back to a fee. And so we have established that baseline. We've put anything above that baseline into a departmental account that's to be spent on students this year, whether it be through technology purchases or purchases within the department. So that'll kind of account for that plus side there. And then also, taking those that were a little heavy, we were able to reduce fees. So you can see the highlighted items on the old fee sheet reflect all changes that were made for this year's fee sheet. So we figured in those courses, we could at least reduce it by half. So that's what we tried to accomplish in those. And then our goal, this is just the first step in a multi-year process. At the end of this year, because we've created a baseline, we can go back and better determine what is in each area and then go back and reduce fees even more according to that amount. So actually, I'm pretty excited about being able to do that. And I think it's going to help greatly. And I think it's going to help greatly. It helped a little bit this year. Hopefully you've seen that as you graduate from classes. I think we've had a few people that have reported that they have seen a little bit of a decrease in that. I wanted to highlight a couple of areas though. Specifically, we did remove a couple of courses that really weren't, aren't offered. There was an older sheet that had not been edited. Also, the Board of Education and the school system is going to help us with English workbooks, which has been a continual cost for all students. It's a vocabulary workbook that they use in every English course at the high school. And we're, the board is going to accept that cost on behalf of students, so that removes that fee. And the same is true for PSAT practice for sophomores. We really feel that the percentage of sophomores who take the PSAT is so large that it really does benefit for all sophomores to sit for that practice test for the PSAT during that 10th grade year. So the board is also going to help incur that cost on behalf of our families so that they don't have to pay that. So that really takes away two fairly sizable fees there in addition to the reduction in some of the others that are APs and all science classes and a few English classes. We did reduce sophomore class fees for some reason. They were higher than all the others. They don't do any more activities than the others do, so we were like, well, it just makes sense to make it equitable. So we are planning to do that as well. The only thing we added back, and I wanted to point this out, if you'll notice on the new sheet, the only highlighted area is a printing kiosk account preload. So this year, and just for those in the audience, we're moving to a company called Webba, which is going to place four printing kiosks in our school. And it basically is a way for students to be able to print at school, help save on that printing cost at home. It's for a lesser cost than what we would even charge in our own library. It is a preloadable account, much like your lunch account is. And so we've offered an opportunity to preload those accounts through fees and that can be done throughout the school year as well by families. And literally, if a student has a document they work on at night, they come in, they log into the kiosk with their Google account. It is specific to each student and it automatically just draws whatever they're printing and prints right there at the kiosk in color, or black and white. So they do this in Hoover High School, they do it at Mount Brook High School, and a few colleges around town. It is a local business. And so we wanted to take a stab at that and try to provide that for our students. We think it'll be a good thing at the end of the day. We do hear a lot about the costs incurred at home for having to print in toner cartridges and things like that. So we want to help with that as much as possible. So I'll have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's, I think it's been a long time coming and I'm glad we finally had the opportunity to sit down and do it. And hopefully our families will see a benefit over the next couple of years and truly a sizable reduction in their fees. I do want to shout out also on APs, thanks to Lauren for all the work that they do. It is tremendous amount of work. And Amanda Jordan, if you know Amanda, she teaches AP Spanish for us at the high school. She also is heavily involved in helping and supporting us with AP. So we could have had as good of a process.
AP honor roll, I forgot.
Oh, yeah. We did make the AP honor roll.
Forever.
Yeah.
World course is just stated.
For everyone, which is awesome.
Well done. Thank you.
Go Royals.
Right. Dr. Barton is going to give an update on facilities, facilities and just a little while, so we want you to get an idea of where our project stood at this point. Dr. Barton.
I think there's no question in knowing who the rookie is here with the administrative reports, whereas the other three provided you a documentation handouts.
I have a PowerPoint, so I guess I'll be going old school with this one. I apologize. So I'll know next time.
I'll give you a cardboard kiosk.
I knew I shouldn't have just jumped to Ryan. With no commentary prior. What that said, as Dr. Freeman mentioned, it's been since April, since the Board of Education has received a construction update. And as you can, I'll let. The PowerPoint didn't come across, so I have a PDF copy of it here, so.
This is two times now.
I got you on.
So with that said, it's been since April, since the Board of Education has received a Capitol Projects update. And so a lot has been done, but a lot has been left to do. You know, I think I would be remiss, this is a newly created position, Assistant Superintendent for Operations. I think I would be remiss if I did not express my sincere gratitude to the Board of Education as well as to Dr. Freeman for allowing me this opportunity. Very excited about the opportunity, can't think of a better setup, working with Dr. Freeman and Ms. Marlin, and watching through Dr. Freeman's vision and also working with the tremendous staff here in the Stavey. This has been a wonderful month so far and I'm looking forward to more going forward. Charge from Dr. Freeman.
What is this? Technical difficulties. There we go.
I'd like to retract what I just said. All staff with the exception.
We can post that, that opening.
That's right. It makes it that much more fun, so. As you can see here, the charge from Dr. Freeman, so we have our Capitol Projects ongoing at this time and I'm going to go through those. My thought was that I would give a very general overview. We also have Sean here from Lathan. I know Tony was going to be here to answer some questions as well, but if we need to go a layer deeper, we can do so. I'm going to do my best to give a comprehensive overview to make sure it's consistent with having some brevity as well. So the charge that Dr. Freeman has given me in the midst of our work here with our Capitol Projects is to also work through a facility assessment. So this would be all of our facilities as well as the projects that we're currently engaged in, as well as working through a capital plan. Our capital plan that we provide to the State Department consists mainly of the projects that the board has already engaged in at this time. So our hope is what we look at is a three, five, and 10-year plan on our Capitol Projects going forward. So these, these are the two items that we would like to bring to the Board of Education post the projects that we're currently engaged in, so.
Hey, click.
Wait, I'm going to take it from here. That's all right. So, all right. At the Stavey Hills Elementary West, you can see, this is the architec rendering, this is what we are looking to get to. You can see up here, Contractor is Wyatt. Anticipated completion date, September 26th of 2018. No further state inspections have been set at this time, but we have bi-weekly owner-architect meetings, as I know that Tamsa Sauer attends those as well. I put down a couple of field notes and you can see, this is the architect rendering, as you pulled up, I'm sure today. You notice this is where we stand to date. And so we have basically to get from there to here in that September, to that time period between now and September 26th. Roofing systems, this is what we are working on, this is what's being, what's taking place with Wyatt to date. Roof membrane is complete, installing roofing, rooftop air conditioning units as well. The tower building and windows, and you can see I've put those on the side there as well. Tower building windows appear complete. Masonry and concrete window sills are also complete at this time. So as far as the structure and being able to have school in the tower facility, we should be just fine. Again, we're waiting on Wyatt to complete this project and give us to that September 26th timeframe. So, Ms. Sauer, anything to add in terms of what?
Are we currently on track for beating that, Patrick?
We are, yes. I say that with full confidence based on the last conversation we had in our OAC. John, would you agree that September 26th is the heart gate? And we're hoping to have building permission out for final inspection prior to that so that we can start to make that transition.
Yes, we actually have the at West today, what we call pre-finishes meeting, which means all the seal, finished ceilings, floor and paint, all the material. Have a meeting with all subcontractors for Wyatt today. So that means since the roofing membrane is on, they'll be able to start installing those and I feel very confident of leading that in.
Good. Ken's wearing me out, but.
And I know that Ms. Carlson is already starting to have conversations with her staff in making that transition from the old kitchen cafeteria to the new kitchen cafeteria. The nice thing about that is that's, that's control. We just had a conversation today, actually, that's control 100% by our staff to be able to determine what those, those timeframes are. Any other questions on?
That one's finished on budget.
Yes, yes. Mr. Burgess provided me with master budget and updates to that as of last week. Transitioning over to, transitioning over to Cohaba Heights. You can see here Duncan Thompson is working through the classroom addition as well as the new media center. We actually have final inspection tomorrow at nine o'clock. Now, I want to make sure that I preface it with the fact that final inspection is over the classroom portion of the addition. So that will include the classroom building, art rooms, renovations of existing facility, hallways and stairwells. That will not include the media center. So in our final inspection, that will be an area that will not be available to us come the start of the school year, the media center.
When are you expecting to have it?
Well, we've heard a couple of things, we've heard a couple of timelines. The aggressive timeline, I would say, end of August. More conservative timeline, early to mid September is when we receive that. The, it's referred to as the monumental stair. The monumental stairs, stairs will have as cable a little bit longer. And now that that has been installed, you can see that there at the bottom of the field notes, now that the monumental stairs have been installed, they can begin to grind in the rest of that media center, the project should move along a lot quicker. In terms of classrooms, that additions, I'm sure Ms. Hunter can speak to this as well, but first that I heard yesterday, they were finishing up floors, waxing floors in the classroom additions, or the classroom addition. Doors had been hung. I know that took place over the weekend. And I believe that 75% of ceilings are installed in terms of the ceiling grid and the tile. So those additions should be ready, are going to be ready, I know for Mr. McCall tomorrow for our final inspection and then also for student attendance. So any other questions on?
I've got one. I had a couple of people graciously reach out to me this weekend about start times on weekend construction. And are we abiding by the appropriate start times or are we?
I think it's another thing that we've said, this is something that Sean's been working through. We are looking at landscaping barriers and buffers. That's something I believe he just had a conversation there at Cohaba Heights in terms of ensuring that we have a nice buffer between our property and our neighbors. So you can assure them that we are working very hard diligently to make sure that we are starting on time, on weekends. Please have them contact me, we let that information on to powers that be to know that, but also that we're looking to a buffer barrier area so that that is on.
The contractors have all applied for, they have to get permission to do that to take the work on the weekends. I think they have to, they have to ask for it every, every week?
Yeah. They're asking every week for it. And I got contacted by the city manager last week, the first report I got of starting too early. And so both contractors were contacted saying, do not start until the applicable hours. And they've been eager to, to capitalize on all the daylight and dry weather they can. But this is the first complaint we got and we did address it with them.
And those hours are what, just so we?
I believe on weekends, it starts at nine and goes to four.
Okay. And again, if we need to contact individuals and let them know that we're going to be more diligent on that, please give our number and we'll make sure that happens. So see, that is our responsibility. And our hours also start at nine. All right, moving on with Cohaba Heights, we do have the, we do have the access drive parking area as well as the playground improvements. And you can see here the architect rendering in terms of the area that we're going to get, I believe it's 50 to 60 cars stacked that we should gain by having this, this additional asphalt space for vehicles. Asphalt pavement, again, out there last night as well. So I had a chance to go out there and they actually completed asphalt. All concrete is down, the sidewalk is moving on. Handrail is down for that area. The playground equipment has been installed, fence posts have also been installed for the fencing, which should be done by the time school starts. So that, that area is getting very close to being complete. Again, that will be part of our final inspection tomorrow. This one's a little more difficult. I don't know whether to refer to this as, is it's Middle School, Barry, the former Barry Middle School or whatnot, but I think we all know what facility I'm referring to. So where the, so they have gone through and they have done a demo of building G. So that has now been taken out, the site work in the back, all of that was approved June 27th with final inspection. So we have now moved on to Package B, which is renovation of the existing facility as well as the addition of the band and chorus addition. So they are working right now as of going through like last week, they are in Section A here as well as Section B, which will be the cafeteria and kitchen area and some offices. And then A, my understanding, that would become the sixth grade when Ohio's sixth grade. And you can see, well, I need to jump back, Blaylock Building Company was the one that received the bid on this project. Bid opening was held on June 12th. I guess that has been in terms that you had an update before. Pre-construction meeting took place on July 16th. And you can also see anticipated completions for both renovation and new construction, June 14th of 2019 and then July 16th of 2019. So that's the anticipated date that we should have Barry turn over to the Stavey organization. Building A, plumbing trenches dug, quarry title floor and subfloor removed, and they've also been going in and doing refurbishment of less rooms. So that's what they're doing there in Building A. Building B, ceilings removed, throughout, glass block removed from the serving line wall, existing cooler and freezer panels are also being removed. There is conversation, and I'll jump down here to this architectural schematic, but this area here, the new gymnasium, the date has not been set yet for the bid on that, on that package. So you can see a lot of conversations going on. This is just conversation that we're having in terms of what could possibly be. A lot more conversation needs to take place prior to that and finalize, but you can see there where that, where that gymnasium would sit relative to the field on that. I know this is a big project, so any questions?
What dictates the date of the bid date for the new gym?
Well, we're in the design phase of that now, working through that, and I think.
We're on building condition to give the green light as it's going on.
I believe we still have to see building commission comments on the way that the building is now and the cause the city wanted us to look at adding baseball to this side. We moved the multipurpose room, it's going on with him to the side to pull it in and keep us off that there's a very steep maintenance factor. So the civil engineer is redesigning the site or designing it so that the baseball and softball fit. That will be a part of what Blaylock is the current building company. And so, so that's kind of what the timing will be.
Those movements, does that allow for future construction years down the road?
Perhaps. It gets pretty tight back there where there's some parking areas, I think you can see that as to the gymnasium. But we've added on to the high school many, many times. So as Dr. Burgess knows, I haven't, this first summer, I haven't worked with Dr. Burgess in a while. Yeah. So there's always, there is a real safety, it's most likely to take some work.
It will likely not be ready when school starts on 19th. Ms. Hansen, I've already had that conversation.
We'll have contingency ready, but we'll have a lot of outside space.
It'd be the new gym. The new gym. Everything else, we're guaranteed.
It's PE without nuns.
We're ceilings. Like tents without nuns. Moving on to Gresham here. Again, you can see that on June 13th, a bid opening was like, the Niren Construction received the bid, you can see the construction budget of $6 million and the construction contract where that came in at, came in at 5.929. Anticipated completion for this project based on pre-construction, July 16th of 2019. The work that is currently being done there at Gresham is the demolition of this metal building, which is building. building, which is building F. And according to Lathan, that's about 20% complete as of today. Feel that we're working nicely with the Jefferson County Board of Education, make sure that there is good coordination between, between our team and their teams. And we have a meeting actually tomorrow at one o'clock. I know that Ms. Carlson is also meeting with their CMT director and having conversations with them. So, it's, we feel that the transition has been, as well as can be expected up to this point now, but again, I think it's a July second, so we're continuing towards that. Programming meetings are ongoing bi-weekly, and you can see the areas that we are concentrating on. The first one is this carpool, and this again is just a concept that we're working through, not necessarily the final decision on this, but this, this is one rendering that we are looking at to make sure that we get more stack and maximize that as much as possible to create good traffic flow there at the Gresham campus. Also looking through facade improvements, HVAC parking spaces, as well as landscape.
Where's the existing road?
Are we able to go that up there?
We take it from this tank.
Gresham, Gresham Road runs right along here, and this is where you would turn in to go into the school, and then you would come off. I'm sorry, you would come off of Gresham Road here.
Okay, okay, so this'll cut driveway right there.
Those houses sit back here?
Yes.
And this is the play area?
Yeah.
Any other questions on?
Thank God, Mark, I appreciate that, appreciate your reports today. On the financial statement, Ms. Brown.
In your one packet, you have the investment statements, investment balances as of June 30, 2018, and the monthly financial statements. I just want to point out a few things on the monthly financials. You have a budget actual comparison report for the month of June, which compares 2018 to 2017. And at this date in 2018, we're at 90% of our, of our budgeted revenues, and as of June 30, 2017, we were at 86%. So, we were up about 3.5% over last year. And then for our total expenditures and transfers out, we're at 78% of our budget, and we were at 75% at this time last year. All bank accounts have been reconciled as of June 30, 2018. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. For members, I would recommend that you approve the financial statement for June 2018.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the financial statement. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion?
Item six, I would recommend board approve consent items for all trips and student transfers.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to consent items. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion?
All right, under business, item eight, I recommend board approve the 2018-19 salary schedules and supplements as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the 2018-19 salary schedules and supplements. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second? These are just the standard, revisit this stuff, is that?
It is, it is. We have only minor modifications, the major modifications, the 2.5% raise is included across the board for employees.
And that's, that's reflect, that's a statement that it raised, yes. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The next item is, I guess, something that the superintendent really can't make motion on. It's the superintendent's salary increase based on the 2.5% state increase. So, what that is, is in his contract, if the state provides a salary increase to the staff, then the superintendent also gets one. So, I will make that motion, that we, that we increase the superintendent's salary to reflect 2.5% state increase. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Sure, Steve.
Opposed?
All right, thank you, thank you, Lord. Item C, I'd recommend the board concurs that the Board of Education agrees with the state of Alabama that it is due no adblock on taxes from Gold's Gym located at 1090 Montgomery Highway, Vestavia Hills, Alabama.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to adblock on taxes for Gold's Gym. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Second? Do I have a second? All right, all in favor? Opposed? And so, can you remind us again, or public, the substance of that, Ms. Brown?
I, I will attempt to. First of all, Alabama law and the Constitution and the statutory law says that governmental bodies like municipalities and city and county school boards do not pay adblock property tax. The statute says that municipal adblock taxes must be levied by a municipality in the month of May of each year for the next succeeding tax year. In other words, their taxes are paid in advance. It just so happened that the city of Vestavia Hills purchased the Gold's Gym property from an outfit named Store Acquisitions, and the sale was closed on May the 31st. And therefore, the state, upon request by the Finance Department of the city, said that since the city is exempt from paying taxes, you don't pay yourself, that there will be no taxes due. The no taxes due, nobody gets it.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Let's move on. Thank you, sir.
Item D, I recommend the board approve Mike Donaldson as sixth bank committee representative.
Is he all sick to die? I've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the sixth bank committee representative. Do I have a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Do I have a second? And so, in the past, this had been someone else's.
Yeah, Greg Meyer had done it for, as long as I, I guess, he didn't want to get the call.
Makes sense to have a senior resources person do that, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Donaldson is the sixth man.
All right. Item E, I'd recommend the board approve the employee reimbursement rate estimate.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the employee reimbursement rate. Do I have a second? And this is just an annual revisit?
Yeah, it's, it's a change.
Yeah, it brings us in line with the federal pretty unrated, $59 for breaking hands.
All in favor? Opposed?
Item F, I recommend the board approve the IT system specialist job description as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the IT system specialist job description. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Describe this for me.
Yes, this is not a new position, it is a similar of a repurposed position that Mr. Price and Ms. Marlin have been working on since his appointment as Director of Technology, and it is more in line with the areas that he believes are important for the position to be responsible for. It is somewhat similar to the former network administrator position, that's got some nuances that were reported to the operation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item G, I'd recommend the board approve the citizens' science course description as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to the course description for the citizen's science course. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
See any discussion?
Or it's course definition? Yeah, course will be offered at Zitz Middle School this year as part of their pirate period, I believe that's right, exploratory period, am I saying that correctly?
It's actually in about our sixth grade.
I see, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
For members under personnel, I would recommend approval of the personnel actions as submitted to.
You heard the superintendent's recommendation with regard to personnel. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
So, yes? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? So, did? Okay, at this time, we'll ask for public comment. Please limit your comments to items on the agenda. I think three minutes is the rule of thumb. Please walk up and have at. If not, we're adjourned.